So that's a.
I don't look at the most person on the inside.
Those were, I think they've been in the wall anyways.
Oh.
It's in a detention area.
Well, I guess this is better. Cause I get Steve and Lauren and Sheriff.
So we get rid of them, the block continues. So those two we build are, every metal building that we've done is a metal building.
We're gonna make it by rail.
Yeah, there you go.
It's a great number. So if you guys find us, it's a hundred and twenty-eight dollars between those two. Two is really not applicable at this point, just because of the contractor. Early on, there was opportunity to get back, there's AISCs just as standard. For steel pipe and paper, but we maybe don't have at this point. This one would affect the sheriff. In the jail currently, there are seven doors that are sliders.
Are these in the secure area of the jail that is sliders?
Yes, they're all, so the two, the first two are from your Sally Fork into the. Keeping those as sliders.
Okay.
That you don't want to have it wrestle somebody in and open the door.
Yeah.
On that. I don't know how old which these are, but we offered all seven because it's a seven thousand dollar per door savings. To go from a slider to a swing. These are the three that Elba has advised saying this really doesn't affect the floor in jail to change your slider to swing.
So it could be like personal injuries?
They're, so like in your kitchen and laundry, those are sliders. Typically, that may be used most of the time.
Right. You just need to be able to secure those areas if there's something that happens.
The doors will still be able to be secure, it's just instead of.
Are they still controlled?
They're all controlled, yeah. Instead of you, you know, hey, open up this door now, they'll unlock it.
Yeah, it'd be really nice to know which ones.
Yeah, I don't have the drawing of this to show you, but if you have. So we're gonna come back to that one here. The next one is, these are in your isolation cells. And in the. And the two, the two dormitories. They have a modular stainless steel showers. It's all built out of, everything's stainless steel, right? What, what this change would be, you'd get rid of the stainless steel module. Add one block wall, wing wall, and then put a modular stainless steel shower unit. So the head and panels are all there. So it's a block shower instead of all stainless steel shower. No, it's an epoxy, it's block walls with epoxy paint. But, so instead of stepping into, like if you had your, you know, just a basic.
It'd be like fiberglass shower, you'd step to it in your house.
It's all stainless, right, in the jail? This just goes to all block, cause you already have two block walls that this slides against. Or is that third one?
Yeah.
It's twenty-two thousand dollars. You don't have to use, there's five little showers. We're wiping down the epoxy paint instead of stainless steel.
And this means, and you can always, you can paint the two or nothing, it affects the stainless when they get in there and scratch it.
Yeah. Yeah. If you have a bad, if you have a bad module, it'll go bad, it's like anything that happens, you pop the little one off the wall and put it on versus.
The whole thing, alright. I like that idea.
Yep. Let's see. Number five, double generator enclosure. So backup generator. Has certain requirements to it already. This is an additional spec item that puts another enclosure around it. It's really more for noise than anything, but you already have the.
This was almost an error in specification where they specified a closure twice. We're saying we can eliminate the second enclosure.
They wanted to, you know, get rid of it, like, so this is to me, it's okay.
Yeah.
It's to me, not that much.
Yeah, right.
It will not affect your generator, wash of it.
Just care to.
The piping, so the sewer piping underground is currently called a new cast iron. The plumbing engineer, the plumber, have offered that you go with PVC. Typically, you go with the cast iron so that you can, if people, if you're gonna route it out, you've got that option. PVCs, you can do the same thing with. There's no, it's not gonna rust out over time. Whoever's gonna do it. Twenty-four thousand dollars. Everybody we've talked to, engineers, contractors, it's not, it's not a life, it's not a thing. You're not gonna do it for years out of your time, it's the same. So, we rarely see cast iron being used anymore. Cause all your preventative, people stuffing stuff in, it's all on the packet yourself anyways.
Well, honestly, if you're not adding pipe, pipe should last longer than PVC and then this cast iron. And you can still jet it, you know, or maybe it gets flushed.
Do a lot more jetting when you do. So that's that, twenty-four thousand. Spoils, so this is a dirt thing. Right now, the specs call for everything to be hauled on. So maybe the hall and the foundations, everything that is, yeah. They're still laying in the back of the property. This, this fifty-six thousand, five fifty, is to stockpile the dirt in the back and burn it up.
And we put a shooting range in on that?
There's, it's gonna be a.
Put a shooting range in back there.
It's a good chunk of dirt. The other option is in the future, you have a stockpile there, high rate of garbage, whatever, you'll get it.
It will affect the grading back there, but.
My pay will suck it off.
Right. We need it, might be able to do it our own time. I like the idea where it's gonna be put back here, towards the back, where it's really gonna, then some of our guys going all the way to Kim and to practice shoot. They can do something themselves there with it. I like that.
Correct.
Yeah, if you have a wall or.
You got the space, it's, yeah, it's good to have.
Can't replace it for.
The, the next one is masonry reinforcement modification, this is something I've done in the last four jails I've been in. So, masonry walls in detention area are designed to be vertical reinforcing, they're so often two feet already, okay? And they fully grout the entire wall. So it takes a block wall and makes it, in essence, solid concrete. We're not getting away with that, but those walls are twenty-five, thirty foot tall in some areas. What this does is anything above twelve feet in an area in the detention that cannot be reached. So in your day room, where you've got walls that go up twenty-five feet, at twelve feet, they stop fully grouting it. Reinforcement still runs up and they grout that, but it doesn't become a fully grouted wall. And so, the thinking is nobody can access that area anyways. Unless you can stack three guys on top of each other and then they start chipping at a wall. So in essence, you're reinforcing walls.
And if they did chip the walls, if they did stack up three high, where does it go?
To the next day room.
So it's not an outside, exterior wall?
It's not an area where they can easily get to, like, so that wall continues, but you have double stacked cells, right? That area is still fully reinforced, so it only starts back here where you, you would see them if they were doing something. And even then, it's not, the time it would take to chip through a block wall.
It's only gets time.
It is, that's why we don't put it where they have the time, anyway, you would have to see them, so.
So twenty-one years?
It's almost twenty-five thousand dollars.
All state redemption.
Exactly. That's right there, right? Just don't pass any photographs of pictures out.
True.
So that's, that's a no brainer, the architect's fine with it, he marked up the drawing where we could do it and it doesn't affect this. Ultimately, that falls back on him or something, you know, once it happens, so we just offer this, hey, they're squeezing money here.
Well, they probably use like eight inch blocks or?
And they fill?
Yeah, most there's are eight inch, some of those taller walls become ten inch. Cause they'll get some all the time.
And they're built.
Gonna grout, it's all. We talked about asphalt, we're gonna leave, that's in our contract, we'll leave it there, so.
Do that in your eyes for the department and back access, be gravel, we're gonna save some.
Yeah, so we, we mentioned that on number ten, we just haven't priced it yet.
Okay.
Reducing, we talked about maybe reducing the parking area, but specifically the drive area. There's a lot of parking out there, that's something to look at. Right now, I said, you know, touch it, look at that drive from behind. Just get. Just look at that.
Yeah, I think we needed to, we need to do that later.
It will rarely use. Eleven's not applicable really at this point, it could be, but it's, it probably creates more than issue. But not long-term function, maintenance of the building, leaving that mezzanine in places looks best.
Right.
We were, we've provided some options, we're gonna get drastic, yeah, two drastic factors.
When you were really getting aggressive initially, I was gonna tell you, let's just have that for the list if we need to.
Twelve is electrical, utilizing MC cabling in select areas along with aluminum rated cable instead of having every single thing in cabinet. So if there's areas that are generally accessible, running MC cable, it's still metal jacket. Goes into greater, it's a good, it's a fifty, fifty thousand dollars there.
Now that's not a random area, presumably it's just on the outside of the cells.
It's all, no, no one made it ever get killed.
And again, no, that doesn't reduce longevity, you know?
No, it's the same wire that would be in the conduit, it's just in a different jacket. If you ever had to run something else, it's in an area where you could run, you can use a cable. This one is a preference to you, Sheriff. The, there is currently a shower in the rec area. So you have on one side of the rec area, if you look, there's down one corner, there's a toilet. The other, there's a shower. Shower's not required, you're probably not gonna have people going to rec and wanting to shower. The only reason it's put in there is if you ever wanted to turn your rec area into a dorm and put beds in there and then you've got a bathroom and a shower. Otherwise, at that point, you now have no rec area.
Right.
Which is a requirement, right? So, we, we rarely put a shower in the rec area, but it is a future present, so.
Could we do in some layer, what needed to do?
That's what we've offered, is we would put the plumbing in, but not go out the shower.
And just be accessible by chipping away, concrete. If you have a shower in a rec room, you just got more issues.
Yeah, you gotta watch them, right? Now, you can turn it off because of, you don't have the water management system.
Right.
But still, you get people. Gives them a place to hide in the rec room. Fourteen is nothing right now. Fifteen, the main feeders, instead of being copper, done with aluminum wire. This is a pretty common thing. They size differently. Aluminum is significant, but you go to copper. It's pretty common to do feeders of the size that the electric engineer allows.
Are that kind of the way? We talk about feeders, that what comes into building to the panels?
Right, yeah.
You know, that really is in modified sizing of your breaker. In some instances, it really is already counted for in its number, so. While you've already, you've got maybe an increased size of the breaker, the savings to offset from going copper, it's still.
We're trying to find the stuff that ultimately will definitely affect how it operates, how it functions, or whatever we're trying to do. We are still looking into potentially having the lighting vendors look at, are there alternative fixtures that are less expensive? Right now, it's for the design, but that's something that we will bring out if we get some options. Hey, if you use this light fixture instead of this one, here's the touchy time, you save five grand if you have to do that. So I have anything off the table. Same on the generator, that will people have in there, but.
Yeah.
There might have been some alternatives. This is something to look at, I wouldn't, we don't need this decision today. Again, when we start construction, we'll always continually look out so as to save money, right? Just to save, to go back to it. But, at some point, when we get a contractor on board for kitchen and laundry, it's gonna get a bit wise for us to all sit down and go over the kitchen and laundry equipment that they're providing. You may have.
Probably not.
No.
Go ahead.
But you may have something that has life left on it that you might wanna swap out and save some money. Right now, the intent is to buy all new, that size for this building, the growth of this building.
When we get twenty grand invested in the washer and dryer and it still runs very good in the paint, you.
Have better implications.
So that's where this, again, we're not offering anything, but we want it on the list, have that conversation anytime. Jay, you know what the glass was?
Yeah, the glass one, number nineteen, is essentially instead of, if you look at a window, a normal store for a window, the glass hits the molyne in the center of the molyne. In our building, or this building, they specified the glass to be on the front face of the molyne, so if you look at the building, it's like a seamless look. So it's an aesthetic thing, if you shift it from the front of the glass, the molyne to your middle, it's like most buildings have, it's about savings.
This is in your office area.
Yeah. Again, it's just aesthetics.
It's seven thousand.
On your eye.
Right. I don't think it's affecting them.
No.
The longevity, the ceiling's not, I don't think. You need your fire pots outside, Tony.
Yeah, as long as it doesn't affect anything.
No.
Uh, Joe mentioned there.
Fire alarm. Twenty, yeah, the fire alarm system. So I think they specified a different vendor for the fire alarm system. And our contractor recognized that if they used another vendor, they gave them pricing, they could offer some savings in removing the delegated design requirements, which I'm still not a hundred percent sure if we're able to do that. We can get Elba to determine that. But essentially, it's, it's gonna serve the same functionality and everything, it's just a different vendor.
Question, we didn't, we didn't have this, we checked, is it yes or no?
Yeah.
The question is, does the county have a preferred vendor for fire alarm that you already use? And that's why they were specified as this old provider?
Have to visit. Every year.
Pre fire.
And they come in every year and do the inspection, so.
Is that coercion?
I don't know.
We'll look into that, again, this is, this is one of those things. I think the main goal is to have enough of the savings that you guys approve, that gets you, you know, a good cushion under what finance strategy can provide. It doesn't mean these things can't even say, hey, let's, now we know the fire alarm, let's take twenty-three and save it, and keep reducing that. Cause we track that out, also with the contract anyways. I said no to this, cause, yeah, they, they're counting for. The, the storage that you have for your cameras to hold the recordings. There's a hundred and eighty days of storage. Now, you can adjust your camera's recording quality and how many images it's taking per, per minute to increase what is within that. The detention guy's always offered this, if you wanna reduce it from a hundred and eighty days to ninety, cause it's a big dollar, I don't think that's worth.
You know, I know. If I put close to.
When you go back and add it, three years from now, you want more, it's five times that amount, right? So we just, we wanted to put it on here.
That's something I don't wanna skimp on, is the cameras.
Correct.
In my opinion, because if you don't have the quality, you can't see what's going on.
Yep.
Well, this is just talking.
And one lawsuit is.
Yeah.
Those cameras get you out of rights, well worked here. But this is just the storage and.
Right.
And you need as much of that as possible. These are, are we still vetting these?
Yeah, the, the next handful of them are really just minor aesthetic finish related items that we're still vetting. If we even define some additional savings and if we maybe start to recommend using these, but again, these are minor aesthetics, so instead of using the specified manufacturer for the softening lobby and the exterior panels, we could use an alternative manufacturer. It'll look the same, act the same, everything, but.
Our philosophy is, in essence, the same product, why not choose the cheapest one?
And none of these affect warranty either, we're not gonna offer you something that's gonna.
So you end up recusing and they go fall off the wall?
Yeah.
Yeah. Like twenty-five, for example, is going to like a Corian solid surface countertop, we really pick twenty dollars drum instead of cords. It's eighty-one hundred dollars to go to the cords and countertops and materials. But those are things we're gonna continue to. So we'll hold those as, as potential and.
Being in jail will be cheaper than having concrete.
But these are counters they don't get to, so. Twenty-seven, that's, you don't even have to decide that, that scope's already doubled up, so we just put it on here. We will clean your windows or stuff, that's what that means. Twenty-eight's a fire suppression, to use group scheduled ten pipe for over two inches and move it to scheduled ten. Then long, this is a common thing. Again, twenty-two hundred and seventy-five dollars, not much, but there's all accounts, right? This is a question operationally. In your secure IT room, which is where your secure electronics controls will be housed. They currently have a clean agent fire suppression system, so if the alarm goes off, the door locks, it seals up. It's like a gas system. It's very common, this is more of an IT, that we can get rid of that system and just have normal sprinklers. If it catches fire in there, then it's heads go off and it floods the room. The last jail, one of the last ones we did, the IT guys, they would rather have water damage than fire damage.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question.
Well, they can, they can restore stuff, it's, is what I was. So, again, some people are feared, well, what if a head just goes off? I mean, if you have a fire in that room, you've got bigger issues than what put the fire out. Typically.
Well, the servicer stuff get hot, so will there be a special head in there that?
They get hot, they, they, so the quick release is a heat, uh, heat related head.
Okay.
Right?
Be similar to the sprinkler head?
Yeah.
Okay.
So. It's, again, it's twenty, almost twenty-four thousand, a lot of difference. Some people are concerned that a sprinkler head's just gonna go off accidentally, that is extremely rare.
Right.
Now, if you get a hit one.
Right.
Which I've personally done in my career, it's not fun. It will go off and it's nasty.
It's like mud.
I think it's still contested. So that's a question, again, you, you, do you wanna invest in another system or just keep the wet system that had ever?
I think, really, the wet system could, you know, could, they can recover from the motherboards on that school.
Uh, number thirty, the specs, this is just a, this comes into, this is common design, specs are pretty common. Uh, the fire suppression spec requires seismic bracing and restraints on those systems per the site classification. However, the structural engineer's site classification is such that those bracing restraints are not required. So if you guys say, hey, let's get rid of those requirements that don't meet the site classification anyways, you save. Structural engineer.
Elba's in the structural.
They are, yeah, that's.
Sign off.
It's a design coordination thing, let's give that. Well, not affecting. Uh, currently, the plans call for siding the areas. Some areas, some areas around the building call for siding. This is a price to give a seed instead of sod. This is one of those things that what we typically do with something like this is say, okay, let's approve it to save the money upfront. And as we get closer to the end, we get someone that would say, hey, you're gonna get some contingency back, if you wanna spend ten thousand of that, go ahead and sod it. It works nice and it's easier to maintain and have established.
We walk through the roof.
But, but it's one of those, like, upfront, we, we offer everything. Might as well save the money now, put the lower upfront price, but then keep it as a target and we just add in.
Twelve months from now, block's hot, ten thousand. You buy the bag of steam for six hundred.
Yep.
It's gonna be great, man.
This again, how much work do you wanna put into establishing?
I think you guys doing what you're doing, I think when you take this off, I'm not gonna complain to you guys that we can do what you just said at the camp.
So we'll just, we'll accept it, but table it to the end, as a preference.
And that'd be ready to steam, ready to steam, to, to reside, to be leveled?
Yeah, that's the scope, is to, for the landscaper to have it ready to do longer than. No matter what. This next item, I want to share, there is a, currently calls for a standalone security event logging computer in the. I think it may be the jail commander's office. So they, they proposed getting rid of that standalone computer and combining the. Combining two computers so that you have it, you still have the logging, but it's not on a separate device. Explain that right?
I think so. Two to one.
In essence, it's really expensive.
And that goes, and the master control is where that's gonna be used, is that what you're saying?
Yep.
Is there any issue there?
They're combining that logging into the SMC computer and then the backup to that is in the master control. So you still have it on two computers, it's just backup to the master control.
Alright.
This is in essence like a flooded computer.
Yep.
And again, you know, it's by. This one, eliminate factory witness test in, in Wisconsin. So the specs call for them to provide transportation for like the four people?
Four or five.
Four or five people to go to Wisconsin to witness the test of how your system works. They do that same thing when the new jail's built, in the new jail. So, if you wanna go to Wisconsin and witness it and talk through it, great. There's money that's required in our specs to, to provide that, to do that. You don't miss out on any training or witnessing or anything, you just do it here in your jail. So, that's a, that's a question.
Is that why they know where it's at, our own jails are going somewhere else?
And that happens before the jail's done, which is fine, but. Yeah, we do with it.
So I guess, what is it actually, what system?
This is accurate controls, the security electronic system, so how do you unlock doors, how do you manage cameras? It's the totals, it's, it's your operate, your.
Okay.
You, you and your jail commander and your chief deputy and probably a handful others will want to witness.
Train on that. But this will get rid of forty-four hundred dollars and they're gonna do the same thing here?
Yeah.
This was literally just a visit to the factory that builds the materials. If you wanted to go up and see how it's built, put together.
This one's a double scope coverage, one package calls for the solenoid valves, the pumpers already got it, so it's two thousand dollars, we're still getting some there. And then the other one is, we are still vetting this, but we think it's easy savings on getting some alternative manufacturers to go red doors. So, they're extremely expensive, however, we're specified, if you have alternatives, it would save a chunk of money. It's all, in essence, the same number of.
If it's still be secured, cause I think right now we just got rid of the garage doors, I don't know.
So if you guys are fine with us looking at it.
We'll make sure it meets the same criteria.
Yeah, it's not gonna be any class of, it's just.
We're going back to that one.
The other one, did, did that load up on your thing?
Did not.
And what was it?
With sliders, three of them. Here's what I'll do, I'll, we'll mark when we get back to the office. Here's what I'll do, I'll, we'll mark, when we get back to the office, we'll screenshot a drawing, circle the three doors that the architect recommended to go to swing. And if you're good with them, we'll put them on the list. If you say, just keep my sliders, take them off. The sliders are preference, obviously, it's easier, because you, you can, you got an inmate there that you're helping, you don't wanna have to open it up. It's an automatic operator that you call to control that. But it is a long-term maintenance thing, because those sliders will.
It's maintenance and all that on top of it too, but they also gotta be secured for safety for your.
So we'll mark that up, and if you guys have permission, if Sheriff says, yeah, I'm fine getting rid of those three, then we'll put them on the list if he says we really.
I think that with what you've already.
If you add two others, so we'll be under the twenty-five.
Still under the twenty-five.
Probably under the twenty-four now, so. Okay, that gives us enough to finalize our scope document, to put in the auditorium, the Ted has that final thing. So if we do have a joint meeting, it could be approved and signed off on.
So again, just so, just from my head, the bulk of these things are, we're getting an upper tier, an upper tier thing was ordered and we're getting the same, these proposed. Basically, the same thing, but possibly a different vendor, everything's the same, except for.
Some of them are just doubled up or we don't have that, so.
Engineers and architects a lot of times have political information, if they put into a project, it may be from some other project and, you know, it may be there for some other reason in another job, but in this one, it doesn't need to be. So we just kinda did a nice deep comb of specs with them and hellabas in our subs and made sure that you're not getting, you're not paying for something that doesn't bring value to the project.
And there will still be stuff that will be, hopefully we get this thing around, you walk through. Fifteen minutes, very before you have to be.
I don't think, if you're in jail, it looks like you got some work. Do you got some work?
Been sitting here so long, I forgot how to turn the damn thing on.